Six o'clock, I called this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is December the 5th, 2016. And tonight, Vice Chairman Milton Campbell will lead us in the invocation and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please rise.
Let us pray. Father, we want to thank you for this day you blessed us with. Lord, thank you for the rain that was so desperately needed. Lord, we ask that you put a hedge around our emergency personnel, keep them safe, Lord, and be with their families and give them comfort. We also ask that special blessing for the Holloman family and the loss of a wife and a mother. Please be with them and give them all the comfort that only you can provide. Lord, let us remember this season and the true meaning of Christmas, Lord. Please guide us and lead us in all we do. Amen.
Place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any commissioners that would like to make a report? I'll just mention, I went to the parade on Saturday. It was well attended and my two-year-old and nine-year-old loved it, so I hope you guys did a good job. And also, we went to the Bethlehem Star Lighting in Bethlehem Saturday night and they had a great program there, so we appreciate all the community does to celebrate Christmas and the birth of Christ. Okay? Anybody else? You've got the agenda before you. Are there any additions or deletions or changes?
Look, I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comment. No one signed up for public comment, so we will move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the Alexander County Board of Education swearing-in ceremony. So, I'm going to turn it over to Judge Graham, Judge Dale Graham. We appreciate you being here tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. It's always a real honor and a privilege to participate in these events. These are true public servants. They work hard, they have to take time away from their families and their work and everything else to participate, and they're here because they want to make a difference and do a great job for our county. So, we're very fortunate to have these people. I'm going to start with the Board of Education and swear them in. I understand they want to be sworn in en masse. Is that correct? I think we have three. So, if you'll come forward, please, with your families and anyone else that you might want to hold the Bible or participate. And if you could just line up kind of facing me, I'm going to stand here at the podium. No, I'm going to read it and you'll repeat after me, okay? And here's the Bible, okay? All right. All right, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and the constitutional powers and authorities which are, or may be established, for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will truly execute the duties of the Board of Education of Alexander County according to the best of my skill and ability and according to law, so help me God. Congratulations. All right, then we'll move forward to our two commissioners, and I think we should do them one at a time unless you want to do them together. Since it's Jeff's initial term. All right, so if you've got someone here to hold your Bible and to stand with you, your family, okay, very good. All right, left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I do solemnly and sincerely affirm that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are, or may be established, for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I do affirm that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner for Alexander County according to the best of my skill and ability, according to the law, so help me God. Congratulations. Yes, sir. Okay, and then our chairperson, our chairman. Ryan Mayberry.
Okay, you'll have to hold it because it's bad time.
All right, well, you can hold it and raise your right hand, okay? And if you'll repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I do solemnly and sincerely affirm that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are, or may be established, for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I do affirm that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner for Alexander County according to the best of my skill and ability, according to the law, so help me God. Congratulations. You're very welcome. It's a great honor. I'll sign these real quick.
We need to thank Judge Graham. He's a big asset to Alexander County. Before we move on, I want to give our newest commissioner, Commissioner Jeff Peel, an opportunity to just say a few words if you'd like.
This is an exciting night. I'm really happy to be sitting here and I'm looking forward to serving you and learning all the great things that are going on and to be able to be an asset as we work together to make Alexander County as great as it can possibly be. I thank you for all of your support and look forward to being your servant.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. Next item on the agenda is the Alexander County Foster Parents Association, colon Brenda Price. How are you doing today?
I'm good. How about you?
Good, good.
Good. I'm not sure exactly what you wanted to hear about now. I've got a little bit if you want to hear it.
I'll tell you, the reason I asked you is because Josh is a licensed foster parent and I am as well, and we just wanted to try to get more information out about the need for foster parents in Alexander County, and there is a need out there.
Well, there definitely is a need for foster families here in the county. I've been doing this since 1982. I went to work for the Alexander County School System in 1981, and the job that I was doing was the mean old truant officer. And I found myself at DSS's doorstep quite a bit because we, the people that I was working with in the school system also was people that DSS was working with. I made lots of referrals and that's exactly how I ended up becoming a foster parent, my husband and I. And like I said, we started in January of 1982 and have had somewhere in the neighborhood of 180 kids over the last thirty-some odd years, however that is.
Ms. Price, I was gonna, if you didn't mention that, I was going to ask you that question because the first time I heard your name in, you know, Alexander County DSS, they made a comment about how many children you and your husband personally have cared for.
Right. Some of them were just overnight. A lot of the kids were just overnight or two or three days, but we've had them as long as 18 years. And, you know, they ranged in ages, home from the hospital at three days, all the way up to 19 years old. So, we've had a lot of different age kids, a lot of teenagers, and it's been a challenge over the years, but it is, it has definitely, definitely been fulfilling and rewarding over these years. The one thing that I thought you were talking about is the Christmas campaign.
It was.
And, you know, 30 years ago, well, we had three teenage girls that were living in our home, plus we had a set of two-and-a-half-year-old twin girls, plus my own biological son, and, you know, I didn't know how in the world I was going to buy all these kids Christmas. So, together we kind of came up with the idea of forming the Alexander County Foster Parents Association. And I started 30 years ago with this letter I'd like to read to you. The foster parents of Alexander County recently formed a nonprofit organization for the purpose of helping foster parents and foster children. Our association helps to develop, hopes to develop, a better understanding of the problems of foster care, both by the persons involved in caring for the children and by the general public. Foster children are youngsters who, for a variety of reasons, must live apart from their families for a period of time. There are currently 14 foster children ranging in age from two years to 18 in Alexander County. Foster parents are people who are willing and able to love and meet the needs of a child. Our greatest reward comes from the satisfaction of helping a youngster in a time of crisis. Alexander County has nine foster homes. Since parenting and love is our primary goal, role, excuse me, little time is left for the extras foster children need and deserve. This is why we are asking for help. The Foster Parents Association want to make sure that all of our foster children have a merry Christmas. We are asking for new toys or cash donations. We are depending on a strong public support to make this Christmas a good one for all of our foster children. And it goes on to, you know, talk about where you can make the donation and about it being tax-deducted. This is the letter I wrote this year. Dear friends, conflicting loyalties and lost dreams often make the holidays a difficult time for children in foster care. These children miss their families and their traditions while at the same time they want to be a part of the activities of the foster home. The foster parents strive to make the holidays a memorable time for these children. During this holiday season, a donation from you can help put a smile on a foster child's face and hopefully create happy Christmas memories. Once again, you have the opportunity to be a Santa to approximately 79 kids with your gift of new toys, new clothing, or a cash donation. We also have started in the last several years doing a donation in memory or in honor of someone. If someone makes a donation, then I will send out an acknowledgement to the person that made the donation as well. If it's a living person, I will send a copy to them as well. That's one of the things. And I counted up right before I came, and I think we have 27 licensed foster homes here in Alexander County now. And you can, I don't know, I can't do the math in my head, but we started out with nine foster homes and 14 kids, and now we have 79 foster kids and about 27 homes in the county. So, there's definitely a need. We don't do this to get rich. I know you guys also hold the purse strings. I did a little math before I came. I just did the board rate for the middle-aged kids, $581 a month. Divide that by 31 days, that's $18.74 a day. But this is a 24/7 job if you want to consider it a job. So, that's about 78 cents an hour, little over $2. What was I going to say? Sorry. Oh, if you just consider an eight-hour day, it's a little over $2 an hour. But it, like I said, it's a 24/7. And, you know, this helps to pay for all of the necessities that the kids have to have and for what we do for these kids. But there are no other funds available other than what we do at Christmas. We don't do another fundraiser the whole year. This is the only fundraiser we do all year long. And, you know, I usually keep out some of the money that we get, collect at Christmas for use during the year, field trips, school pictures, prom. We've paid for braces that Medicaid would not pay for, you know, out of these donations. Lots of different things over the years that, you know, but like I said, we try to do this for the, you know, the kids that, you know, this is over and above the money that we get and on a monthly basis. Any questions? Have I answered what you wanted me to do?
Well, and I'll make a few comments on what you just said as far as the monthly stipend that you get, and Josh and myself can attest to that, that comes nowhere close to the amount of money that you spend on these foster children. And, well, I say it doesn't come close, but it doesn't cover all your costs. There's just no way, and nobody does it for that reason. You don't do it for that reason.
I've not gotten rich over these last however many years, 30-some years.
But, you know, we've got 79 kids now, is that what you said? 79 kids in foster care?
Right. And what I do at Christmas, we count every kid that DSS has custody of. Now, it has dropped the amount of kids because there are kids that are in a kinship care. There are kids that are in group homes and some of them that are out of the county, and they choose not to include those children in this. We have three churches right now that, we have one church that takes all of the names. Sometimes they all come back in, sometimes they don't. And then I have another church that takes 20 of the names and another church that takes 25 of the names. So, hopefully, when Christmas gets here and all the packages, we'll be able to, you know, try to even it out a little bit because some of them may or may not get anything, but I will try to, you know, take some money and go buy some stuff so that they will all have gifts for Christmas.
And I'll mention too, you know, these kids, they might have been in foster care for a year, two years. Some of them might have just arrived last week. And the newer ones, you know, they're scared.
Yes.
They don't know what's happening. They're unsure about the future. They have no control over it. And we need to do everything we can to help them, you know, to be as comfortable as they can and to be, you know, feel as comfortable as they can going through these holidays away from their family. And I'll say, we don't have enough foster families. We need more foster families. So, check in the licensing. If you'll call DSS, they will get you all the information that you need to know. But imagine if, imagine if you and your spouse had both passed away and you had no family, or you had no family to take care of your children. Would you not want someone who is a loving, caring foster parent to take care of your children if no one else was available to take care of them? Just imagine if they had nobody else in the world to take care of them. That's the way these kids are. They have no one. Doesn't mean that they don't have relatives. They have no one that can take care of them or will take care of them. So, check in the foster parenting. It is very, very rewarding, not just for the children but for the parents as well.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one other comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
There are 79 kids in care right now.
Actually, that has gone up. They've taken four in since that.
Right. And that's, and actually, that's kind of what I was, that kind of alludes to what I was talking about or wanted to mention. There aren't 79 kids in Alexander County that are foster children. I think, I'm thinking of, you know, my son is on a five-six basketball team right now. And there are two other little boys that both have been custody of the state of North Carolina at some point in their life. Now, thankfully, both of them have been adopted by families in, you know, in Alexander County. I think there's, there are two five-six age group basketball teams in Bethlehem. The other little team with, you know, eight players, I know of at least one child on that five-six basketball team that was in the foster system, you know, and has been adopted. And not all children, adoption doesn't end up being what happens. But what I'm saying is, it's a lot, it's a large, a much larger percentage of the kids that you see on the street, and, you know, and when I say that, you know, the kids that you walk past at Walmart or the kids that you, you know, if you go to your child or your grandchild's school, you know, if you knew each, every kid that walked past your story, it would blow your mind as to how many of them have been in the system. You know, and these kids are, one thing my dad, my dad used to say, will not say a lot, but he said to me several times, you don't get to choose your parents. You know, these kids didn't choose for their parents to be drug addicts. You know, these kids didn't choose to have been living in a car for three months before DSS came, you know, DSS, something happened, DSS finds them, and DSS whisks them away. And what's crazy is, these kids have been living in a car for three months with their heroin-addicted parents, and they still love their parents like there's no tomorrow because that's all they know. You know, and obviously, I mean, obviously, I'm a foster parent strictly because my wife is sneaky and conniving and, you know, but the benefits of just being around, I mean, being around the children, let alone, you know, them living in your home, and like I say, some, you know, some it may be a day or two, some it may be a week. You know, we recently just had a little girl, and actually, Ryan's family and my family currently are both licensed through Caldwell County because we cannot be licensed in Alexander while we are commissioners by law. So, right now, you know, we're licensed through Caldwell County. But, you know, we had a little girl for 22 months. She was three months, she was three months old when she came to us. We had her 22 months. Thankfully, thankfully, she went back to a good situation. But, you know, I wish, I wish more people would, I wish more people would see the need, see the opportunity that we have, and, you know, as honorable, ethical, especially if you consider yourself Christian, you know, we're supposed to take care of, we're supposed to take care of, I don't like the word, but orphans. You know, and, and all I'll say is, it is more than, it is more than worthwhile. And I know everybody can't be a foster parent, but you can, you know, you can make sure that there's a Christmas present for a child, or you can make sure that there's money for them to go on a school field trip, or that, you know, I'm thinking, you said the prom, I hadn't thought about that. I have a 15-year-old daughter, and those kids, you know, those kids deserve to go to the prom. They deserve to have that, that young lady deserves that dress, you know? She didn't do anything wrong. And if you think about what is needed for all these extra experiences that you want these kids, you know, these 79, 82, however many there are right now, guess what? You know, a year from now, it may be 67 different children, you know, because that's the way the process works. But I just want to say, anything that, anything that you can do to, I know is worthwhile. I promise you, you'll get just as much out of it as the child will.
That's true.
Brenda, with 79, her 82, however many there are right now, guess what?
Brenda, with seventy-nine, her eighty-five, whatever that number is approximately now, the children that we have, and the twenty-seven homes, it's like three kids per home. How many are allowed to be in a, in care, I guess, is my question?
You can have as many as five. It depends on the space that you have, but you're allowed to have, be licensed for five children.
So, we're really strapped.
A lot of these kids are not even in these foster homes. A lot of these kids are in therapeutic foster homes in other counties. They have special needs, and so a lot of these kids, you know, are not in these twenty-seven foster homes. But, I don't know exactly, I didn't do a count to see how many of them were actually in Alexander County foster homes before I came.
But we, yeah. Need homes tomorrow.
Yeah, we need more than twenty-seven foster homes.
Yes, we do, yeah. One of the, the workers now, Anna, is leaving, I think today, to go and be trained for the MAP classes. We've had to send the people that were interested to Caldwell County to their training because of the, I won't say turnover, but lack of people that had the training to do these classes.
And I'll proudly say that my wife has been teaching those classes.
Great.
Because she's, yeah?
Yep. So, we definitely need more. We always need more because it is a very trying position that we're in. It's a very loving, but all you have to do is open your heart and say that, you know, I know that I can't do what needs to be done for every child, but if I can help one child, I feel like I've, I've done what I need to do.
And, and if you can't be a foster parent, you know, not everybody should be a foster parent, depending on a lot of circumstances, but there are a lot of people, there's a need out there, and I know there's a lot of qualified people that could be foster parents.
Yes.
If you can't be a foster parent, then, you know, you can donate, like you say, money for field trips, you can donate toys for Christmas. Mount Hermon has their closet up there, I think you can, well, we donated a crib and clothes and things like that, so, the, there, there's a lot of needs out there, and I would love to see us do a better job of taking care of those that can't take care of themselves.
And you were, you were talking about the clothing closet. A lot of times, we get kids in the middle of the night, and they have very little of anything that they come with. And I try to keep, you know, just like toiletries, you know, for the older kids, a toothbrush, toothpaste, those kind of things. These kids come with very little of anything. So, you know, the, we try to keep those kind of things in our homes too, but, you know, there's a definite need out there. They don't have a suitcase. That's, if anybody's church wants to do this, they come with plastic bags, a Walmart bag, or a
Trash bag.
Trash bag, full of their clothes and things. You know, I had one church that has actually donated some money for me to go out and buy suitcases for some of these kids, and they're going to have a suitcase for Christmas. But, you know, it's, it's sad, but, I mean, it's the way it happens. And, and like you said, it's not the kids' fault, and they don't deserve, they deserve to be like any normal children. And that's one of the things that I've always tried to do. I've tried to just refer to the children as my children, and not as a foster child, because there's so much stigma, bad stuff, that goes along with being a foster parent, and, and it's not. We have some wonderful foster parents here in this county, and other counties too, and, you know, it's, we get a bad rap sometimes. And I didn't, I didn't go over the, the money thing to, you know, to, to try to make, look bad or whatever, but I wanted to say, a lot of people say, well, you get paid to do this. You know, we don't do it for the money. We do it to help children.
If, if you're doing, if you're, if you're being a foster parent for the money, I will promise you, you will end up in jail because you're not taking care of that child correctly.
Right.
And, and it's gonna, you know, it's gonna cost you a little bit of money, it will. And, but it's well worth it, I mean, it's, it's just so worth it. And, it's just kind of like being a commissioner, if you're doing it for the money, you, you know, you're, everything that you earn, some ways going back into the community, whether it's, you know, raffle tickets, donations, whatever, so, you know, and I've got a donation here for you that I want to make. And I know some of the guys might have brought toys or something, so, but we, we appreciate what you do, and we just want, I, I just, Josh and I, being foster parents, and, you know, we've had, we've only had three kids, and I don't know how many Josh has had, but I just want to keep getting the word out, and maybe, maybe it'll be, you know, we'll have some more interest in it, so.
Yes.
But anyway, I'd like to present this to you, and I know Milton brought some toys.
Toys, I missed it.
Just use that for whatever you'd like to use it for. I know it'll go to good use.
I'm sure.
So you'd have to be licensed to do that?
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll say, I'll get, send it.
Thank you, Brenda, we appreciate it. And, please consider, like I say, please consider anything that you can do for these children because they have no one to take care of them. We're gonna move on to item number five on the agenda, request for the purchase of an ambulance. Call on Doug Gillespie, the EMS director.
Thank you for letting me take a few minutes of your time at this meeting here, and I'm here to request the, go ahead to purchase one type-three Chevy forty-five ambulance. And we discussed last year the different types. Type-one is a truck chassis with a, just a sliding rear window that you hook to the back. The type-two is the van chassis, and the type-three is actually a van with a walk-through to go into the back. And we talked last year that this would probably be our last year for getting the type-three. Well, we got it snuck in, and we got a diesel engine for a type-three this year, so this will definitely be the last year we can go with a type-three ambulance. With the piggyback we purchased, we look at a total price of one hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. Compared to last year, it was one hundred and thirty-one thousand twenty-three dollars for about a three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollar difference, which I didn't think was too bad. Last year's difference was about a little over eighteen hundred dollars, if I remember correct.
What brand was that?
It's AEV, it's Ashley's Emergency Vehicle out of West Jefferson.
Yeah.
And it's coming through Northwestern Emergency Vehicles.
Okay.
It's who we've dealt with, I know, for the last four years.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of one type-two, one new type-three ambulance at a cost of one hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Just one question, is that, that's pretty much, I guess, everything that's needed other than maybe what, stretchers and?
No, sir, that, that's not everything that's needed, that's just the truck, the chassis, and the box. When you look at what everything is needed, you're looking about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did purchase a new power stretcher this year, we tried to purchase that with each truck the last three years, so every truck that we have that runs mainline has a power stretcher with a eight-hundred-pound capacity lift, where we just push a button and the stretcher raises up, and if it's used properly to save on back injuries and everything that we see. And then the LifePack monitor is usually anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars, and then the add-ons, you're looking at quite a bit of extra.
But a lot of that cost, you can come out of the old ambulance.
Yeah, we'll use what comes out of the old ambulance. We're not really taking one out of service since we added that fourth twelve-hour truck, but we did have some stock that everything's going to come in. We should be, no more other purchase that we need for that truck. And what purchase we have, we already have in the budget.
Right.
The new stretcher that we've already purchased.
All right, thank you. Appreciate what you guys do because you're our hospital, so, haven't had need of you personally, but it's nice to know that when we make that call, we have the facility and the vehicle that's going to be coming, so appreciate what y'all do every day for us.
Any more questions? Okay, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six on the agenda, election of board chairman. And normally, we change the chairman every year. I think a couple of years ago, Larry Yoder served two times in a row, simply because I was too busy at the time and asked him to do that. But, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that, for two thousand seventeen, that Commissioner Milton Campbell serve as chairman. He is the current vice chairman.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll say, any other nominations?
Hmm?
I'll say, I guess that's
Yeah, is there any other nominations, sorry?
Yeah, I guess I should have seconded that.
Yeah, yeah, you can. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, motion passes four to zero, or one, and it's just gonna stay.
Yeah, I'm staying.
Okay, now, the election of the board vice chairman, and Milton Campbell served with distinction, I might add, as our
Yeah, right.
Vice chairman. I would nominate Ronnie Reese as the board vice chairman for two thousand seventeen. Is there any discussion? Any other nominations? You don't have time?
No, I'm good. No, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, all those, and any other discussion, I'm sorry? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes four to, we're all, it's staying. You can't really abstain, but anyway. We'll move on to, and those will take effect on January first, two thousand seventeen. We'll move on to item number eight, voting delegate designation for Legislative Goals Conference, and I don't know the dates, I think it's twelfth and thirteenth. Okay, so, we have to, well, we don't have to, but we need to nominate someone to be the Legislative Goals Voting Delegate for January twelfth and thirteenth, that was, that's on a Thursday and Friday, for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference. I am planning on attending that, I am planning on attending that, so I will be there, I will be the voting delegate if no one else is going. Anybody else planning on going?
If you're gonna be there, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I had, I mean, I had sort of
It's a good thing to go to.
Yeah, I'll say, I'm, yeah, I may be able to attend, but, um...
You're a maybe, he's a definite.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go. We, it, it's good if all of us go, but if it's just me and Josh, that'd be great too.
You need to have a form of a motion?
Yeah, please.
Make the motion that we appoint Ryan Mayberry to be our voting delegate.
Second.
To the Legislative Goals Conference.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Peel, do you think you'll be there?
Would you be interested in?
Hope to be.
Okay.
I may, I may get it, I'm just, we're waiting on grand time.
Okay, all right. All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item number nine on the agenda, which is Resolution Regarding the Designation of an Official to Make Recommendations to the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission on ABC Permit Applications. And, calling Rick French, county manager on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have a copy of the resolution, as you just stated, staff recommends the Planning and Development Director be designated, that position be designated for that role in this process.
And could you, could you tell just, this is not whether someone is approved?
No, this is just, really, the signature at the end of the process, just, just moves it forward, the ABC officials will actually go through their review and investigation. So this is just, this is not saying this person or that person is good or bad or whatever it is.
The state takes the due diligence.
Right, it does, it does.
This is not approving it or disapproving it. Basically, all it's saying, all it is, is we're signing off on the paperwork.
That's right.
And, so, but I, I would make a motion that we make that a part of the duties of the Planning and Zoning Director.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
He looks really excited, by the way.
Another hat.
Item number ten on the agenda, ABC Compliance Fees. I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. After a review of local governments across the state, and you've had this information in your packet, staff is recommending a flat fee of one hundred dollars to cover the zoning and building inspections, compliance forms. We make that recommendation.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, that flat one hundred dollar fee will cover basically a zoning, I don't want to say a zoning check, but essentially a zoning check because it will not be an actual application for zoning. And then obviously, building inspections, you know, they're, the safety inspection portion, you know, essentially a safety inspection by building inspections. Does that sum up what that fee will encompass?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, I guess not every place would require a building permit to be issued because they might not have to do any kind of remodeling, and
Still have to be inspections.
But still gotta be inspected, so this will cover that
Yes, sir, that's why it's a flat fee, yes, sir.
If I might ask, this is just for the inspection, should they have to have additional building and other things, and there will be other permitting processes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll make a motion that we, that the one hundred dollar fee to cover the zoning and building inspection compliance forms be instituted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven on the agenda is Board Appointments and Reappointments. Local Emergency Planning Committee, I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appoint Patricia Baker for three years, reappoint Leanne Wisnant, Chris Bowman, William Hammer, Russell Green for three years, and also appoint Russell Green as the LEPC Chair.
Anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion
I make a motion, we accept the recommendations as presented by County Manager French.
Second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 12 on the agenda is Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 15 and 16. I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 15 is to decrease the Bethlehem Water Fund revenue estimates based on corrected data from year-to-date revenue reports from the city of Hickory, and to increase the Bethlehem Water Fund capital outlay budget to install a water line along Tigtown Road from Bowman's Cutover Road to Confederate Lane. Budget Amendment Number 16 is the budget for additional Goblet Lee grant funds from CBCC for Change Order Number Three, which is the welding booth installation and welding ventilation system, and to adjust the budget for building outfit expense by creating separate expense line items for EDA grant expense and local, which is county and CBCC expense. The building outfit, EDA expense line item will agree with the corresponding EDA grant revenue line item. Budget Amendment Number 15 is something that when we work with the city of Hickory, as you're all aware, they administer and our water system and do our operations, and each quarter, those numbers are reconciled. And so when it was reconciled at the end of the fiscal year, those are the numbers that have to be adjusted, and they just happen to be into this budget year. So we're having to fix that, reconcile that, which is a normal thing for us to do. Budget 16 is the Applied Technologies Building Renovation Project Fund, basically rearranging grant funds to meet the needs of what we were doing over there as far as construction. So I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, but they're, they're just really regarding two specific things, the Hickory Water Contract, and the other one is the project.
So 15's a true-up more or less?
It is, a true-up. That's a good way of saying it.
Question, the water line along Tigtown Road, where is that on Tigtown that you can?
I can't tell you exactly. We have several small water lines that we complete or have scheduled, and this will be another one.
I don't know where Confederate Lane is, but Bowman's Cutover.
And I know where about every road.
And what happens with these smaller water lines? We buy the materials, Hickory installs them.
They put them in when they have a little downtime.
So that's an extension, not actually new taps, but it's giving access for new taps.
Rick, are we tracking when we run those, what the tap, you know, how many people actually tap on?
Yes, sir. We are. Well, Hickory does that for us, yes, sir.
Question. On a, on a, you know, on a small project like this, is the, you know, I know the main, you know, the majority of the water lines that run throughout the county, not only in the Bethlehem section of the county, but, I mean, they're what, eight? I mean, they're big, you know? Eight-inch. Eight-inch. Like, I mean, and this is just, and you may, Mr. French, you may not have the answer to this, I don't know, but like these, you know, these little ones, are they, are they eight-inch pipe?
Yes, sir. Normally, they're, they're smaller, either six or even smaller.
Okay, well, that was, I was just wondering because, I mean, there's some places that, like I say, I mean, you, you can run a line, but there's nowhere to go beyond there. And.
For the most part, there's six-inch lines so that we can provide fire protection.
Okay.
And I guess eight-inch supports sprinkler systems and things of that nature, more commercial?
Along residential, but unless it's, works with the flow, it's six inches more common.
What's the water line on Tigtown Road? What's the size on that?
I believe it's eight.
Is it eight or 12?
I believe it's eight.
How far can you run that six-inch line?
Pardon me?
How far can you run with a six-inch line?
Hickory will run lines for us up to half a mile for us at a time when they have time to do it. We provide materials.
But the six-inch line, I mean, how far can you go with a six-inch line before you can't go any further?
Commissioner Peel, it varies, it depends on if it's tapping, if it's connecting to another section of water line, or how far, you know, it depends on the situation, if making, if it makes a loop, or, you know, if you're connecting to a larger water line, it's done multi-different ways.
Yeah, where it's at in the system, depends on the pressure. There's, there's just so many different things.
We still have a lot of areas in the county that need water, and we've been addressing those. This gives us a way to get some of the smaller within this, within our budget.
And item 16 is grant money?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. French, one more question. Number 15, the, the water, you know, just because I've, especially in the Bethlehem, you know, I'm not a big fan of calling, you know, of saying Alexander County has two water systems, one of them is the county system and the other is the Bethlehem system, because I just don't think that's, I don't think it sounds good. And secondly, my thought process, you know, and I'm just, I'll, I'll stop on that, but.
We're moving in that direction.
I know, I mean, I haven't, do we have, do we have, I mean, do we know how many taps will, or how many, how many households will be serviced? Or, I mean, how many taps will come from?
No, sir, but it won't be, it won't be with just a few. It won't be with just a couple of taps. It has potential to pick up some other ones, but at first, it'll be just a few taps. And the, the water system as it's set up now is more set up for accounting purposes and because of the, the water district set up the way it was, so.
Oh, I know.
But this, this water line is running from, it's on Tigtown Road, it's not on this small Confederate Lane, wherever that's at.
It's running, it's running a water line onto Confederate Lane is what it's doing.
Right.
I think it goes down to Lake Confederate Lane, unless I'm mistaken. I think that ends up being Lake Front Paul.
Not from, not from Tigtown Road.
From Bowman's Cutover.
Yeah, but if it's on Tigtown, if it's on the Tigtown side of Bowman's Cutover, I mean, I know it wouldn't. I would have. But I'm just, I just, you know, and the reason I ask that question, and I'll just, is I, you know, my question, and I don't, you know, want to question, question the process, but my question is, you know, are we getting, for $66,000, are we, are we getting $66,000 worth of benefit? You know, if there are, if it means, hey, four houses are getting water? You know, okay, well, that means we're spending $16,000, $17,000 per house to provide city water to that property, you know, and.
I understand, and I'm not trying to, but each year, we do a few of these where we will, within our water budget, we'll extend water to a few areas where there's a need, a desperate need under some circumstance to help them get water. And this is what we're doing on this case. And $66,000 for four, in, in some cases, would be a lot, and it, and you can divide it out. If you, if you ran a water line, say, in the town of Taylorsville, for example, where there's more condensed housing, you know, you're going to get a lot more bang for your buck than you will on the county system. And that's what makes it so much fun to try to extend water lines because it is that kind of situation. But this is something that I believe we need to do.
Is this where they had some issues in that area with arsenic in the wells and?
Well, yes, sir. And there's also some other.
Yeah.
But I guess this is kind of in a rural community unlike, like a metropolitan area where the, you can get developer assistance.
Right.
Because you're going to get taps if you open up a 120 lots. That house is going to be, plus the payback comes back.
Certainly.
With the usage.
Look, Commissioner Lacy, I mean, I think you make a very good point. It's just, in this case, I think it's something we need to do.
Okay. Any other questions? And this all comes out of water revenues?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 15 and Number 16, as stated.
Second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, no, I was, sorry.
Against?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion carries four to one. Item number 13 on the agenda is County Manager's Report, calling Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have a report. Really, tonight, would like for you to consider two things. At the very back of this section in the packet is a resolution that starts the process of, for getting the county employees into the North Carolina State Employees Healthcare Plan effective July 1st, 2017. That's part of, one of the things that we have to do is adopt that resolution to get us on the list for consideration. We'll be on a waiting list. And then the second thing we have to do is a Notice of Participation and Information Sheet, and that, that is attached. And those two items are the first steps. We'll have to do a financial review and get that back and talk about, to the commissioners about it. We have, this will be, we have time to do this, but this gets us on a waiting list. This is what you want.
Have they raised the threshold of number?
They have.
They have?
They have.
So.
Actually, actually been raised to like $16,000. I think they've got, they're taking in stages, they're taking some in January, and they're taking some in July.
Okay. So what, what, what would you pin our chances at of getting into this?
Very good.
Very good? Okay.
And we feel like this insurance will both be more affordable and give good coverage as far as the network?
It's, 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 I don't, I wouldn't say it's better coverage than what we currently have. And that's some of the things that we need to talk about.
Okay, that's to be determined.
Yes, that's what I think we need to talk about.
This only gets us in the.
What this does, it sort of gets us in the waiting, on the waiting list, so, for the less.
We're not definitely going in that direction. We can make that judgment.
There's a memorandum of understanding that locks you in, and that's the last step.
Yeah.
But this, so, this doesn't get you in it, this gets us on a waiting list. So once, if you would approve this tonight, we can send this information in, and then we'll be on the waiting list.
I will make a motion that we approve the Alexander County Resolution directing the county manager to enroll the county employees into the North Carolina State Employees Healthcare Plan effective July 1st, 2017, and Attachment A, Notice of Participation and Information Sheet. That does not mean that we are in the state employees' healthcare plan. We're just going to be looking at it.
That's right.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
So does the state do that for other groups?
Yes. Yes, sir. They'll do it for other, they'll do it for cities, counties, for example, Greenway Transportation, their employees are in the state employees.
Mr. French, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, last year was, they offered it to counties for the first time?
Yes, sir.
And they only took.
$10,000.
They took 10,000 employees statewide.
That's correct.
And we obviously couldn't get in on, well, we couldn't get in on the first batch, even though we, we wanted to look at that as an option when we were, when we were looking at.
Vetting the policy.
Yeah. We were vetting the health insurance last year. Good work.
You know, I think every year, we're going to have to look at health insurance, just for pricing, benefits, network, I mean, it is, it's so complex.
It's the nature of the beast.
Things are changing so much, so we need to try to maintain the best we can.
I mean, most companies have double-digit increases. I know we did this past year. We were just notified last week.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
This is a nonprofit.
Are you guys in favor or not?
Yes, no, we, no, we would.
We're, we're with.
They changed hands on.
Motion passes unanimously. The consent agenda, you have that before. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Do we need to have a closed session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We need to have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 4, 5, and 6, Economic Development, Contractual, and Personnel. We will reconvene solely to adjourn. I will make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.